Good evening, everyone. We'll bring the August 10th on Media City Council to order. Is your motion on tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda under the consent agenda. I'd like to add item H, Public Works Employee Steve Hall's resignation date is August 21st.
Your second to the motion?
Second.
Our motion made second, any discussion? Hey Jack, can you take roll call vote, please?
Councilperson Harrington.
Aye.
Councilperson Placent.
Aye.
Councilperson Urkel.
Aye.
Councilperson Rodding.
Aye.
Mayor Boss.
Aye. That motion passes. On to presentations.
Thank you, Mayor Boss. At this time, we will have Melissa Barnes, the North Area Metro District Manager for MNDOT to provide an update and answer questions from council regarding the current status of the Highway 65 Viking Boulevard reduced conflict intersection. Melissa, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Jack, Mayor, Council. I am trying to figure out how to share my screen. Is that okay? I also have Jennifer Wilchin here with me. She's the North Area Coordinator for Anoka County. Can you please let me know if you can see my screen?
We do know.
Good evening. Thanks for having me here. So I'll go a little bit over what's going on at the 65 and Viking Boulevard RCI. Advance. Oh boy. Nope. One second, I apologize, guys. How? Are too many screens. Alright, I apologize for the interruption. Working from home, right? So, as you all are very aware, the RCI was installed in June of 2019. And at that time, the primary purpose of the installation was the delay reduction. There was multiple what would be called cycle failures where people wouldn't get through on that first green light off of Viking Boulevard. A lot of congestion on Highway 65 and a lot of concern because of that. So, the solution that came forth after years of discussion and study and outreach was this the first signalized RCI in Minnesota. However, again, as you know, it's not the first signalized RCI. There are national studies that really show that these types of intersections improve mobility and on average reduce crashes. So, what have we done? We've made changes since the opening of the RCI. We work closely with the mayor, with Jack, with other members of the council, as well as the county and the county sheriff. So, in January, we added an additional sign restricting turns from the left lane on the Viking Boulevard approaches. Notice, we were not getting great people actually paying attention and following the no turn on red from the center lane. We also added a left turn allowed on red sign at the U-turn. People were unsure whether or not they could make that move, and that wasn't a loud move. So, we added signs clarifying that. And then, at the first mastarm we would encounter on Highway 65, so the first traffic signal, through only signs were added to kind of the rightmost side. What we were seeing is as people approached that first traffic signal, either southbound or northbound on 65, they would kind of slow down as if they were going to make their right turn there. So, to eliminate confusion, we added some sign in clarifying that it was through only in that lane and your right turn would be at the next traffic signal. In April of 2020, we changed the stop bars at the U-turns to be more parallel with Highway 65, to really get people driving lined up more perpendicular to the highway. And that helps improve sightlines at the U-turns. Since the, well, there's a little bit of information on crashes here. In 2018, so before the RCI was installed, there were 23 crashes over the course of the year. Since the RCI opened, and we actually got some new data today, so this is out of date. We've been working with the county sheriff and they have been providing us new information. We're trying to resolve those two pieces of data. But this is very, very close. I think we're off by one or two crashes here. So, crashes since the RCI opened, there were 19 in 2019, so that would be June through December, and then 19 in 2020. So, that's about the course of a year, so about more like 13 months, really. So, that's 38 crashes. And the severity, since they were opening, there have been two fatal crashes at the intersection, three minor injury, four possible injury, and then 29, again, plus or minus that number for property damage. We wanted to take a look at the crash types. Finding out what types of crashes that are at an intersection is really helpful when we have to look at if we're going to make any changes at an intersection, and we want to make sure it's data-based. So, there were 18 rear ends. That's pretty typical of a signalized intersection. You usually see a good number of rear ends, and those crashes that were present in 2018 are probably reflective of that as well. We see 10 side swipes, five angle crashes, two people hit a signal pole, three ran off the road, and of the crashes, 11 were turning from Viking, four eastbound and seven westbound. So, that's close to 30% of the crashes had to do with right turns off of the side street onto Highway 65, which is not something that we expected to see. So, we have made a short-term change, as hopefully you are aware. There, no turn on red for both lanes of Viking was installed last Wednesday. There's also an electronic message board out there alerting people to the change in traffic control, and so far, we've had really good compliance. We've taken a look at the numbers and we're getting about a 6% violation rate, but it's really early. The, we know that sometimes when a change happens, people may react to it differently. Those message boards are out there. There's also been additional enforcement. The county sheriff has been out there more. We've talked and coordinated with them and they've been driving by more often. And then, we've made some changes to the traffic signal itself. In order to make sure that people on Viking aren't waiting too long, we're increasing the green time on Viking in real time, and we're not done. You know, it really takes probably 30 days for a traffic change like this to settle down. So, we want to take a look at it. We want it to kind of regulate, and we'll continue to make changes over the course of time to make sure that traffic is flowing smoothly. So, if that is a success, if this implementation of the no right turn on red, we are going to step through a process to look at the medium and long-term changes. We do not plan to leave no right turn on red long-term. We, if we do find that people are no longer following, not turning on red, we are talking about the possibility of eliminating a right turn from Viking. That would be kind of a to-be-determined. We would look at, again, we would look at the modeling. We'd want to take a look at and make sure that everybody could get through, okay, and we are balancing mobility along with the safety implications. But again, we really want to take a look at this and make sure that we understand how people are going to drive it in the long-term, not just right now. Again, I mentioned we're partnering with law enforcement. We've talked to the county sheriff. They're well aware of what's going on out here. They've been helping us out with some of the crash data that they have, that they found isn't necessarily making its way to us. And we, they are increasing their visibility out at this intersection. We are also providing educational materials. We put the electronic message board out, which is one of the best ways to reach people who are going to be using the intersection. It's right there. We've sent out additional emails. We've reactivated our website. We also want to talk about that the last fatal crash that happened was a motorcycle crash, and motorcycle crashes have been up around the state quite significantly this year. So, we are going to try and focus on seeing motorcycles and motorcycle safety information and helping it get out particularly in this area. There's also been a number of the crashes we looked at that had people that were driving while intoxicated, so getting more information about that. And then, repeating the information we have about how to drive an RCI. We want to make sure that people understand the RCIs and get more information out there when we can. So, I mentioned we wanted to step through this in a stepwise fashion, so we are looking at medium to long-term changes, which I would call in the one to two-year timeframe. We've been working with the city for a while about the signal cabinet and improving the sight distance in that area. So, looking at the signal cabinet, looking at the guardrail, and then even talking about possibly channelized right turn lanes. That is, the turn lanes on Highway 65, possibly setting them back so anybody driving, or any car that's in a right turn lane wouldn't block the view of people who are sitting on Viking, waiting to make their right turn. And then, eventually, we might even look at something like an electronic no right turn sign from Viking, which would allow us a little bit more flexibility to possibly prohibit right turns when people, when it's not as safe and there really isn't a good, there aren't a lot of good gaps to make those turns, and allow them when traffic is a little bit lighter. But again, those are things that are to be determined. It's things that we have been looking at, not necessarily promising that they would be done. They are just ideas at this point and need more definition, more time to look at the actual geometry and parts of the intersection before we would implement them completely. And with that, if there are any questions, I would be happy to take them.
Any questions, Council, for Melissa?
Melissa, this is Tim Harrington, Councilmember. I got a comment and then I've got a question. This afternoon, I talked to one of the deputies about 5:15. He told me he sat there for 45 minutes this morning. Twelve cars went through the red lights, and two were ticketed, one by Anoka County Sheriff and one by the state. And my question is, I thought when they started this J-turn, that when you turn right on from Viking to 65, you were supposed to hit all the lights. It seems like you're hitting the first light and it's red and red. Is there going to be a change in those lights?
Thank you, Councilmember. There are certain times of the day, and I don't know what, I can't remember if you said exactly what time of day that that happened, but there are certain times of the day that the lights may not be timed as well as others. Most of the time, especially during the peak periods, the light should go through. Our traffic group has said that during the off-peak times, due to the cycle length that's out there and getting large trucks through the intersection and making sure that the gaps are large enough for them, there are certain times of the day that you might end up stopping twice.
Excuse me? Hello?
Hello?
This is Steve Misken, I'm the Metro Traffic Engineer. And I can answer a little more on that one. We've been tweaking the signals a lot since we added the dual no right turn on red. Depending on time of day, one of the movements is actually a half-cycle. I think the main line is 100 seconds and the cross street is like 50, but we're constantly tweaking that right now to try to make that movement possible. And with COVID and change in the geometrics, it's been a little tricky as of the last week, but you should see improvements. I know they made a bunch of changes this morning as well, so it's a work in progress.
Good. Thank you. Does Annie have a question?
Yeah, well, first I wanted to say thank you for planning and fixing some of those visual issues. And I'm a little far away from my computer. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Alright. But, you know, we complained about that in the planning stages, the whole city, most of the people in the city were against it since it was planned. And our reply was, it was going to be great, it was going to work, and most of us, most of the residents here think that it needs to be a bridge because we're planning development in there, and that development, either no business is going to want to go there if you keep this no turn on red, and I'll list up because it's backing things up and everybody's hating it. They weren't so angry after they went through the, had the turn on red. But now, a lot of people are angry about it. And right now, a lot of people are just using other routes, making these other roads more dangerous with the increased traffic, whether it's 221st or East Bethel Boulevard or Klondike. They're trying all different kinds of things to avoid that, and that's increasing traffic and making other roads dangerous. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you. I understand the concerns definitely with reduced ability to get through the intersection. We did take a look at delay, and before the RCI was installed at 65 and Viking, people were waiting longer than they are now. So, this is still an improvement, an improvement by quite a bit, especially during the busy traffic periods. The additional delay during busy times is only about six seconds for a right turner. Because of the amount of traffic on Highway 65, there weren't a lot of opportunities to turn right anyways, especially in that eastbound direction in the mornings and in the westbound directions at night. So, you're right, there is additional delay. We do have to balance safety with mobility. The additional delay, we think, is fairly minor, and it is better than before, and there's no more, what I talked about, cycle failure. We have not seen anybody not make it through on a green. So, when the light turns green, every time we've watched it, we are showing that all the cars that were sitting and waiting there are getting through on that green light, which is definitely an improvement. And some of those folks are going through, and before this was there, they would have been sitting and waiting to go through on a green light as well. So, the people who were turning right before and turned right on red may be waiting a bit of extra time, but the people who are going through, we're already kind of waiting that time anyways. And I do understand that people have been asking for a bridge. You know, we are trying to focus on walking through and improving what's going on right now. I do have to say, I do believe in this intersection. It needs a tweak. This is a new intersection, and I think that's okay. Even if we said we want to build a bridge today, it would be years and years before a bridge got out there. So, we do need to focus on making what we have work for now, and getting to that spot where this intersection can work for the city.
I just want to make one more remark, and I think the data right now isn't even going to be accurate because, what, 70, at least 70% of the people who were driving that a year ago are working from home right now. No, the traffic is not anything like it was a year ago, and I used to drive it in the mornings, and I knew it was backed up. I'd sit through their three lights if there were big trucks turning left, but, so, you don't have the accurate data in my humble opinion.
Oh, thank you. You're right. There's definitely less traffic than before. So, your opinion is spot-on. We are still experiencing, I think, a 20% less traffic volumes, and Steve, you can jump in if I'm wrong there, but we are, we do know, we looked at the volumes pre-COVID. We did the modeling for double no right turns on red, and we realized that it was not going to fail or even be close to as bad as it was before we installed the signalized RCI. So, we do know that with pre-COVID volumes, so when things do start to get back to normal, this intersection, even if it's still in its dual no right turn on red, should be able to handle the traffic that would normally be there.
Question, please. When we first discussed this with MNDOT and the county, there's all kinds of discussion about a bridge, and at the time, I think we were told that a bridge would probably be like $21 million compared to what this is. The reason I bring that up, for my purposes anyhow, it's been helpful to have something to explain to people that this is an effort to try to improve things, and we're years out for an overpass in this area. The lane has about two intersections, I think, 109th and maybe Bunker Lake were prioritized over us, so we're way down as far as time. But, the cost was a huge factor. Plus, we have a lot of unstable ground in that area. Could you give a kind of an estimate, guess a little on what the cost comparisons would be on this activity?
I could hazard a very, very high-level guess, just in the range of what typically interchanges are costing us. For example, over in Anoka right now, they are grade separating two intersections, which includes a larger length of road, and that project is between $85 and $90 million. So, you know, you could maybe talk about something in the $30 to $40 million range, and that's just kind of based on other interchanges in the area.
Now, that's a lot of money, and there's only so much of money to go around, but in my opinion, it's at least helpful to be able to explain something to somebody instead of saying, "I don't..." Rather hear some kind of information than no... Thank you.
Melissa, on the list of the mid-to-long range items, those I mostly pertain to sight obstructions that are affecting the Viking drivers. My concern is just how far out those changes are, particularly when we started talking, the city started talking with MNDOT almost a year ago about these things. You know, the guardrails are actually something that we brought up pre-design as a visual obstruction that hopefully would have been addressed. And then, you know, some of the other things. And so, the concern is, you know, you're saying one to two years to make these changes, and these are, I think, probably the most important thing affecting these drivers is the fact that they can't see traffic. And, you know, if the no turn on red is a temporary measure, and it's going to take one to two years to make these changes to improve the sight distance, I wonder how temporary these no turn red signs are really going to be.
Thank you, Mayor. You're correct, and we have been talking about this for a while, and we have been moving on it. We've developed estimates. We've looked at the culvert designs, and we've started, we've even created a 3D visual model as we were showing acceptable sight distances, but at the same time, to kind of communicate what types of occlusion people who were driving out there were seeing. It was helpful for us to have that, and we, in order to break ground and in order to affect an area with this type of water table, and put together a specialized culvert pipe and do some of the other things, it's possible, we can do some of this in phases. We've talked a little bit about, possibly, we could move the cabinet, and we could get that done a little bit faster. It would still be probably next spring, summer, fall-ish, but maybe that's something we could get faster. Once we start adding pavement, things like channelizing a right turn lane, we start talking about wetland impacts and environmental processes, and our internal processes just take a long time, unfortunately, and they are policy with a capital P, and we don't get a lot of, we don't get out of that very, ever. So, we, I understand, and so we are talking about ways that we could possibly make some of these things move faster, but we do have regulations and environmental controls that do slow us down somewhat, and we will work to see what we can do more quickly, and possibly even moving that cabinet might be something that we all, you know, we could go back out there, look at it, and say, "Maybe this is okay, and this will work." We've tried that even with our visual models, so that is something we're looking at, is trying to do some of it sooner.
We appreciate that.
So, I'm going to kind of touch, this is Rainy Placent, City Councilmember, kind of a little bit on what everybody said. I'm going to start with the fact that you mentioned that there was pretty good compliance, and just this afternoon, I approached that intersection at 1:20, going east on Viking to go south on 65, and there were four cars that went through the red light there. I mean, it was one after the other after the other, and I don't know if it was just, "Boy, he did it, so I can do it," but to me, I saw that, and it was like, people are just not, they're just not following the law here. So, I think that's one problem. I think another concern is, you know, like Steve has mentioned, a little bit of the frustration about, you know, we're going to jump to, you know, going a no turn on red, and my perspective is, I go through that intersection multiple times a day, and I really, I kind of liked being able to make that right turn on red. I didn't like having to wait for the light before you changed it. It was kind of the one thing that kind of made me think that this intersection was more viable than before. And, you know, the fact that you mentioned that you have these, you know, studies that say that we're getting through there faster, it doesn't feel that way, because, again, I approach it, I wait for the green, I go through the green, go through the J-turn, I'm hitting another red, go through that, I'm hitting another red as I, you know, going past Viking again to go north. And so, it's frustrating that this is kind of going to be the temporary solution for a year, a year and a half, and I get, I understand the part about, you know, needing to get the permissions and whatnot, but I mean, it seems to me that, you know, a lot of that should have already been done, these studies, when the original project was done, and and part of me is also sitting here wondering is, okay, well, now we have to produce- and, and part of me is also sitting here wondering is, okay, well, now we have to produce these other options? And whether we have to, you know, reapply for funds in order to get this done? And so my question is, is that true? And why didn't, if that's the case, why didn't we, when we were doing this intersection, since it's the first one that's in Minnesota, I understand it's not the first one in the nation, but why, you know, if that's the case, did we not put the money into this project to realize that there was gonna have to be some changes and updates? Because since it's the first thing, it's the first one that we, we've done, as a state, you know that there's gonna be changes. There has to be. And so it's a little frustrating, as Steve mentioned, the fact that we're gonna have to wait how long until this is done? I mean, you know, we as a city worked with you for a long time in the development stage, and, you know, a lot of people were frustrated that we were even considering it, but I, I think, you know, from our standpoint, it was, it was better to kind of work with you so we could try to influence this project. And now it's, we have eggs on our face, to be honest with you. And so that's a little frustrating. Uh, before I, you know, move on and let you answer, I have one other thing that I would like to say is, you know, watching social media, and I, I get it, there's, there's a lot of pressure from people saying, you know, put in the bridge, and, and, you know, why did they do this? And, and, you know, people say, well, gee, how much is one life worth? And, you know, there, there is no amount of money that's worth a life. There really isn't. And, and I know that, you know, you were talking about how much maybe it would be to put in a bridge, and, and the, the figure I remember was about thirty-five million dollars. And, and the number that I, that I think, you know, we came to to put in this particular intersection was two million. That's quite a bit of money, and, and I understand that, and especially now when COVID is coming along, and, you know, the state's budget is a little tight. But, um, we have to kind of work with what we have, and, and, and in watching social media, I have seen people who have said, I don't know how to use this intersection, and I'll specifically talk about the left-hand turn lane from Viking going, going onto sixty-five, either coming east or west, it doesn't really matter. And this person was saying, they were being cut off from the left lane and able to go south, you know, or to be able to go immediately onto the highway going immediate right turn. Instead of going, you know, having to go over into the J-turn to go into the opposite direction, okay? So he, this person was saying, hey, I'm not, I, I should have an option, not only to go over to the J-turn, but to go turn right onto, you know, sixty-five. And meantime, the person in the right-hand lane has the option to go over into the J-turn, and so there's been, I can't tell you how many times, it's happened to me at least five times, where I've had to honk at somebody because they were trying to take, you know, go into the highway, and I wanted to cross over the J-turn when I was in the right-hand lane. So, I mean, th- this is, this is somebody local that was saying they didn't understand how to do this. And when I went and looked at the sign in the left-hand lane, there is no sign that says north on sixty-five or south on sixty-five only. Uh, it just says north on sixty-five. So, there's a lot of confusion, even just about making that turn, whether you're going into the J-turn or where you're getting on the highway, and I, I, you, 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 you explained your, uh, statistics about the people who have been sideswiped. I gotta tell you, I, that doesn't surprise me one bit, so. Getting some understanding and, and making sure that, that people understand how this thing works, even today, it's been up for, you know, what, a year now? And then, you know, also the fact that, you know, why can't we get something done a little sooner? Um, seems a little frustrating to me, and then I think even, even more so is, is, you know, looking at, boy, how do we make sure that people are gonna obey the laws? So, um, sorry for the long dissertation. Thanks.
Uh, thank, thank you, Councilmember, um, and we appreciated your involvement and, and thoughts before this as well. Um, I, 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 as I, I will admit, I'll, I'll kind of go through your, your talking points, that we are just beginning to look at this intersection and the compliance that we're getting for the right turns on red. We took a sampling over the course of a day, as we took a sampling over the course of days prior, prior to installing the no turn on red. So, so looking at those samples, we, we may not catch every group of people who run for at a time, but hopefully we're getting to this statistically significant piece of, of getting a good idea, and so far we are showing an improvement over what it was before of compliance, of people understanding, which I think gets back to your, there, there, there may be some confusion out here. People who don't know what lane they're supposed to be in, they're jostling for position, maybe they're trying to take advantage of being able to ta- turn out of one lane versus another. Um, when, so, so that simplification piece is one of the things that, when we looked at no turn on red, this is there, you know, it's, if that, if that is one thing that can, that can help and can improve safety, if that was a point of confusion and contributed to, to something, we, we don't want that to happen. Um, we, you know, when we first started installing roundabouts in Minnesota, you know, twenty-some years ago, uh, they were single lane at first, and then we started moving to double lane, and, and, you know, that, they were so safe and so great, and let's put, you know, we'll just add a lane and it'll be fine, and, and then it, it multiplies the confusion times more, more than two, uh, putting them to a double lane, so we learned to really grow them with the traffic. Uh, this, this intersection, uh, like most of our intersections, Highway sixty-five and, and Viking was designed for, for twenty years from now, for, for when that traffic will, will be more, and perhaps, perhaps simplifying this intersection, perhaps that might be a way forward of looking at less, uh, and something that can grow with the traffic and, and make smart growth moves as traffic expands as well, that's something we're considering. So, so we've seen this before with other intersection types, uh, and we've also had to do similar to what you're talking about, um, to, to provide additional education. Uh, we had something called the Roundabout University, uh, you know, we, we had people driving through them on golf carts. Uh, so there, there are definitely things that we can do to, to help people understand um, these intersections, and, and roundabouts are incredibly effective at decreasing crashes, and, and these types of intersections are too. Um, I know that we have had, uh, uh, and it's hard for me to stand and say this, right? As, as we are looking at some of these crashes, and we are looking at somebody who lost his life, um, and I, I could sit and try and justify every reason why it may or may not be the fault of the intersection, but honestly, I, I, I do believe that we can make this intersection work. Um, and we are committed to making changes out here, to making this work. Uh, we, we, I, I, you said something about additional funding, and I, I didn't catch all of, all of what you meant, but we, we are, we, we're not asking for funding to make changes out here. We, we are, we are doing that. So I'm not sure if that's, that was the concern, but we, we are able to come in and try and, try and make those changes to, to make it, to make it work. Um, and, and I, I know that these timelines are long, um, and I know that cities can move faster, and we will, we will try and move as fast as we can. I, I just do need to be honest about some of the regulations that we have at the state that are, are kind of non, are, are non-negotiable, not just kind of.
Okay, so I will, I will clarify, uh, what I meant about the funding, which is, um, we're talking now about, you know, moving boxes, um, maybe making changes, you know, to the, to the guardrail. Um, and, and there's some other options too, that, that, you know, the cost may be significant. And so, um, my question was, you know, is it, is what's holding up the changes that, you know, we may see as, as very necessary for the safety of, of this intersection? Um, I mean, is it, is it currently available? Or is this something that has to be reapplied for along with, you know, getting the, you know, the, uh, um, you, you know, the, the natural impact of, of, you know, the area? I guess, you know, that's my question is, is, you know, are we just looking at, 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 you know, getting permission? Or is it that we have to, you know, get the funding as well in order to make these changes?
Uh, thank, thank you for your clarification. No, we do not have to reapply for any funding. It would be funding that we use from the program that we already have, uh, in place. So it, it really is just getting through some of the bigger changes, is getting through the design and the implementation of the actual, uh, work itself, not identifying the funding.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from Melissa tonight? Okay, well, Melissa, thank you again, uh, for being here, and, uh, I'm sure we will, uh, be in communication often over the coming months here and, 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 uh, work to keep this moving forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Good, thanks. All right.
Thank you.
Have a good night, Jen.
You too.
Uh, on to consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt some nice consent agenda. I want item D as in dog and H as in hairy.
Second.
Hey, motion made second. Any discussion?
I'd like to, I'd like to call A, E, and G, please.
Okay, so, I have items B, C, and F remaining. Um, is there any further discussion? Here, none. Mr. Sweeney, could you take roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor, apologize for being a moment or two late here. I had some, uh, internet problems, but, uh, with that being said, Mayor Voss.
Aye.
Councilmember Plazanz.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronning. I think I heard him say aye.
You're on mute, Tom.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Yeah, that motion passes. Uh, item A.
Okay, um, I have some strange questions. I'm sure some of you are going to just consider them quite elementary, but my curiosity gets the best of me. So all of these utilities, I'm just wondering why they can't be consolidated? It just seems, I know they're for different places and stuff, you know, uh, park maintenance, street maintenance, all that, but if it's all Conexus, why can't they be consolidated?
Suzanne, those, you identified part of the issue there. There are different accounts. Uh, some of them for parks, streets, ice arena. The biggest portion of them though are for individual streetlight locations. They bill those independently. They bill each one of them separately, and I'm like you, why they do that, I'm not sure, but that's their accounting procedure.
Well, how are, I'm assuming some of these are lights, you know, that they're like forty dollars or eleven dollars or thirty-three dollars? Why would there be such a big difference in price ranges for lights?
They all should be the same. There may be several at closer, multiple locations if they build jointly. I would have to check into that to see.
Okay, and then my other question is, um, what is it, Virotech Services for street maintenance? What is that for? For the six thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars on page seven?
That was the application of calcium chloride that we put down on Klondike Drive about two weeks ago for dust control and for road stability control. Uh, that's been a real problem because of the traffic count on that and the speeds people drive, so that's what that cost was for.
Okay, thank you. It's just was a new thing, and I didn't know, so I was curious. Thank you. That's all I have for A. Oh, no, let me make a motion to approve item A on the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion? Hey, Mr. Sweeney, could you take roll call vote, please?
Mayor Voss.
Aye.
Councilmember Plazanz.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronning.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
That motion passes. Uh, item D, Tim. D is a dog.
D is a dog. I just want to say thanks to Dennis Murphy for all his time on Roads Commission. And with that, I, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, item D on the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. I also want to, uh, echo what Tim just said, it's, uh, on a roads commission, quite a long time, so. Hey, Mr. Sweeney, could you take roll call vote, please?
Mayor Voss.
Aye.
Councilmember Plazanz.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronning.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
That motion passes. Uh, item E is an Edward.
All right, um, my question on this official building, uh, official update on the building, official position description, is, the only change is that who the supervisor is, is that correct? There's nothing else that changed on there?
There's two little ones in the job responsibilities. One of them takes the responsibilities or removes the statements. He will prepare legal documents. Uh, that's not accurate. He will prepare documentation as required. And then within the body of the job description, it does reiterate the fact that he will report and do those duties as assigned by the Community Development Director.
Okay, that's.
Those are the only changes.
That's the only questions I have, so I'm making a, a motion to approve item E on the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. Here, none. Mr. Sweeney, take roll, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Voss.
Aye.
Councilmember Plazanz.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronning.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
That motion passes. Item G.
Oh, that's me again. Um, this is a purchase of the Public Works Pickup using, um, COVID funds, uh, according to the Act, I'm presuming. But I just want to, I, I feel a little uncomfortable with this. I feel like, um, it's an excuse to use to spend money and that we don't really need this money, um, I mean, this truck. Because I, I rarely see more than one person in the vehicles when I'm, when I, when I do see them. I don't see them that often, but. So, can you clarify that, the, um, necessity of it, Jack?
Uh, again, the reasoning for the purchase is it qualifies under the CARES Act. Uh, it's designed so that we'll have adequate vehicles to assign one driver per vehicle. Uh, this is encouraged as one of the means of addressing some of the pandemic issues. Uh, this is a policy that we vetted out. It is an eligible cost, and that's why we're submitting the application for this.
So, you're not going to get it unless the application is approved, is that correct? Or you're going to get it and then hope it's approved?
Well, that's the part, uh, we have to vet everything out. Uh, we're the ones that actually say it meets the requirements. It's met all the requirements of the Act and the eligibility requirements for purchase. So, that's the way it is with all these things, and the ones that would like, it's like we discussed at our July twenty-seventh meeting. We're vetting everything out, making sure everything fits all the boxes and meets all the qualifications for reimbursement for these purchases.
Jack, is, is this one of those items that the chief, uh, identified and described that he had discussions with?
No, thi- this, this is an addition to that. This wasn't identified in the one that I gave you on twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Okay, so, how many, um, staff do we have that drive truck? staff do we have that drive trucks? And how many trucks do we have?
We have nine staff that drive trucks and we have five vehicles that are available for staff. We have one older vehicle that, uh, we just keep around as kind of spare. So this would give us seven trucks and nine employees to use them.
So is somebody using their own vehicle then, or how is it working for the other two?
In, in, in that case, we do have our dump trucks and sometimes they go out. Uh, somebody will take the loader out or the motor grader out or one of the other pieces of equipment. They'll be driving those. This will give us a better chance to meet those social distancing requirements for people that have to travel together in vehicles.
Okay, I guess I'm just wondering why we wouldn't get two then, but our apply for two.
Well, because I think that this will meet the, the, the goals that we currently have. We don't plan on expanding our staff. We do have two replacement positions that we will be looking at. Uh, we think this will fulfill our needs because of the other vehicles that have to go out in addition to the support trucks. And again, like you said, too, this is not something we're trying to utilize just to pad our equipment.
You're on mute, Suzanne.
I hear when it cuts out. Okay, I'll make a, a motion to approve item G on the, uh, consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, discussion. I, uh, I, I tend to agree to extent, uh, with Suzanne's points. Uh, I mean, we're, we're not only adding new vehicles, we're adding more maintenance and, um, you know, there's, um, I'm just a little concerned that, that come audit time that some of these expenses uh, may not be, uh, may be deemed not eligible, but, uh, I'm glad that staff's going through that in detail and really trying to, uh, make sure we're all covered there, so. With that, uh, Mr. Sweeney, could you take roll call vote, please?
Mayor Voss.
Aye.
Councilmember Plazanz.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronning.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
And that motion passes. Uh, item H.
Again, I want to thank Steve Howe for his, uh, all his years of service at Public Works and, uh, just good luck on his retirement. And with that, I'll approv, approve item H on the consent agenda.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. Uh, I agree. Uh, Steve's been with the city a long time. Um, Jack, does this now make three openings that we have?
Uh, no, we have two openings now. We have one that's currently advertised. Uh, we'll close that advertisement the first week in September and then we'll have a discussion on when to re-advertise or get authorization to ad, re-advertise this position.
Uh, are both these open positions the same type of position?
That's correct.
So does it make sense to hire two people at the same time from, uh, this current?
What we're trying to do is stretch some budget things out and, uh, this is why we're only hiring one at this point. Uh, we're also having trouble too with applicants we're receiving are not as numerous as they have been in the past. I'm afraid if we try to do two, uh, we might not get as good a pool to get two selections at one time, so that's another consideration. Why we may spread this out a little bit further.
I'm just a little concerned. It's, it's, we, we have a 2020, it's only coming in September, so.
Well, there, our, our, our backup to that is we have several people on the fire department who do have their CDLs and do have snowplow experience and they've indicated a willingness to fill in on temporary interim basis.
Okay, I, I don't think anyone on the screen tonight is qualified to drive a snowplow truck. Any other discussion? Okay, see the motion. Mr. Sweeney, could you take roll call vote, please?
Mayor Voss.
Aye.
Councilmember Plazanz.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronning.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
That motion passes. Okay, on to new business, Planning Commission. Stephanie's here tonight.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Trying to share my screen here. Eric, can you guys all see it?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, uh, tonight we have a variance request, um, for the property at one eight zero zero two hundred and eighth lane. Um, Council's requested action is to consider approval for variances um, to allow for an administrative subdivision at the property. So the property is in the R1 single-family residential district. Um, it is currently nine point seven five acres in size and it's also located on the cul-de-sac on two hundred and eighth lane. Can you see my cursor too? Just want to make sure.
Yes.
So the whole parcel here, um, again, it's nine point seven five acres. And, um, what the variances are, or is so this property can be subdivided into two lots. Again, nine point seven five acres, uh, it would be subdivided into, um, two lots. So lot A would be right here where the existing house is. Um, and that lot size would go down from nine point seven five acres to four point zero four acres. And then the frontage on the right of way, our code requires three hundred feet even if it's on a cul-de-sac. Um, and this road frontage would go down to two hundred and fifty-six point nine four feet. And then the, uh, lot split would create this lot right here, lot B, um, which would be five point five two acres in size. Uh, the frontage at the right of way, again, here on the cul-de-sac, um, is supposed to be three hundred feet and it would be reduced to seventy-three point zero six feet at the right of way. And then our code also requires that lots need to be a width of three hundred feet at the front yard setback. So if you take forty feet, um, behind the right of way, um, it's supposed to be three hundred feet. And here it would be reduced from three hundred feet to eighty-four point seven feet to create that lot. So this was heard at the Planning Commission, um, in July and Planning Commission did consider the three factor test for the difficulties. So the first one, um, means the landowner would like to use the property in a practical way, um, but cannot under, under the rules of the ordinance. So the property owner is requesting this lot, um, these variances, so the lot can be subdivided into two lots for the construction of a new residence. Um, the second factor is that landowner's problem is due to circumstances unique to the property and not caused by the landowner. Um, the property is unique in that it is the only parcel in the neighborhood on a cul-de-sac, um, as well as there being a dedicated right of way for the expansion of two hundred and seventh here, um, down here on the southwest corner, um, for this future subdivision of these lots. Um, this lot, the new residential lot, does meet all the other subdivision requirements, meaning it has a location for the drain fields, um, primary structure, um, and all the buildable area. Then the third factor is that it would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Uh, so two of the neighboring properties to the west, um, are one point nine acres and two acres in size. And the majority of this neighborhood, um, have lots that are point four or five acres in size. And then additionally, um, a variance was granted in two thousand and eighteen for a property very close to this. Um, at, I think it's, oh, I don't know what the address is. Um, anyway, so there was a property approximately about twelve hundred feet from this in which variances were granted for pretty much the same thing, um, for doing the lot split. And then the majority of the lots within the Sunny View subdivision, which is right here, um, have approximately a hundred and five feet of frontage, uh, which is less than half of what is required in code. Um, so the reduction in the frontage would not alter, alter the neighborhood. Again, on July twenty-eighth, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on the variance requests. Uh, no one spoke at the public hearing and Planning Commission didn't have much, um, comments on it either. Commission did vote in favor of the recommendation, rendition to City Council on a six-zero quote. So this time, um, City Council is recommended by the Commission, uh, to approve the variances. Um, and as part of the condition, staff recommends the resolution be modified, um, to attach Exhibit A, which would be the survey of the properties with the variances. And then Ms. Durham, she is the applicant and I know she's on the line as well if you have additional, um, questions for her.
Is there a motion on this tonight?
I will make a, uh, motion, uh, to pass Resolution Number twenty twenty dash four zero, granting a variance for a reduction in frontage requirements from three hundred feet at the right of way and building line to seventy-three point six feet at the right of way and eighty-four point four seven feet at the building line and minimum lot size requirements from ten acres to four point oh four acres for parcel A and five point five two acres for parcel B for the creation of a new residential lot on property located at eighteen hundred two hundred and eighth lane northeast, pin number sixteen dash thirty-three dash twenty-three dash thirty-two dash zero 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 four.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. Stephanie, and it's page twenty-five for our packet, which I believe is the bit we want to add. It also shows proposed parcel one B and proposed parcel one A.
Yes, um, I, I will, that is going to be for the next agenda item, um, as part of the administrative subdivision. There's some lot line adjustments that need to be taken care of to, um, deal with an encroachment of a building.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll hold my comments till then. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Sweeney, could you take roll call vote, please?
Mayor Voss.
Aye.
Councilmember Plazanz.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronning.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Hey, that motion passes on the item six A two.
Okay, and this one correlates with the variances that were just passed. This is the administration, administrative subdivision for eighteen hundred two hundred and eighth lane northeast. Um, so Ms. Durham submitted the administrative subdivision. So, um, again, the property right now is nine point seven five acres in size and they would like to split it into two properties. Um, here you have the existing property or existing house, which is lot A, um, four point zero four acres, and then lot B, which is five point five two acres. Now, um, what Mayor Voss asked previously, the question is this administrative lot subdivision also has a property line adjustment on it on the east side of the property here. Um, what had happened in the past is the eastern property owner, um, had constructed his outbuilding onto their property. Um, so, uh, with the lot line adjustment, they're, they're taking care of that. So, um, they're moving the lot lines, so he will have this property and they're doing kind of a lot, uh, land trade. And then this property up here, um, will come part of the four point oh four acre. And then that's just to, to, um, clean up right here where the accessory structure was built over the property. So at this time, um, staff recommends City Council consider the approval of the administrative subdivision um, as shown, um, on the attachment to the report.
There are most.
Mr. Approval of the city, uh, the, uh, administrative subdivision with the details identified in the discussion.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made second. Uh, discussion.
Yeah, so I, I'm assuming then that, that, um, you have an agreement with both of these owners that this was, this was the agreed upon split and trade in order to correct the existing building?
Yes, that is correct. Both the property owners are, um, they might even both be on the line, but yes, they're part of the application.
As long as they're both agreeing to this, I'm, I'm good. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Hey, hearing none. Uh, Mr. Sweeney, could you take roll call vote, please?
Mayor Voss.
Aye.
Councilmember Plazanz.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronning.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
That motion passes. Thank you. On to item six A three.
Okay, this one is a site plan review, um, for U Pole Auto Parts. That's a commercial building expansion located at two zero four one eight highway sixty-five. Um, classic construction, um, is requesting on behalf of U Pole Auto Parts a site plan review for the expansion of the legal non-conforming auto reduction facility. The addition to the structure will be about eleven thousand seven hundred square feet. Um, the existing entrance to the site, uh, you see along here on highway sixty-five, um, will be modified for safer access with the addition of a turn lane and a median in entryway, as you see right here. Um, they are currently working with MINDOT, um, on this. So we think that staff supports that too. We really do think that it will help eliminating some of the issues in this area. Um, the parking facility will be realigned and expanded. So over in this area, there's, um, two buildings that are going to be removed and the parking lot is going to be expanded. We're going to also put up a brick wall here um, to help hide some of the salvage yard. And then here you see the actual addition to the, to the lot. So here's the architectural design of the building. Um, it will be a rock face brick in two coordinating colors with accents matching the existing structure. And then, so the site plan has been reviewed by staff. Um, the city engineering comments have been attached for you. Uh, staff does support the configuration of this site and the landscaping plan of it. Um, any outstanding items from the city engineer will not change the site plan. Uh, the lighting plan, there will be two additional lights in the parking area, uh, for safety as well as a new pole light placed, um, east, in the eastern parking lot to ensure proper lighting as well, so over in this area. Make sure it's properly lit. Landscaping plan does meet the requirements of the city code. And again, there's the architectural design of the building. Um, so this time staff recommends the, the City Council review the site plan and make a recommendation of approval, um, with the conditions set forth in the resolution. And, uh, Planning Commission did take a look at this too in July and, um, there was no public comments and Planning Commission approved it on a six-zero vote.
Hey, is there a motion on this?
I'll make a motion for, for approval of Resolution twenty twenty dash forty-one, approving the site plan review and expansion of, of legal non-conforming use located at two oh four one eight highway sixty-five East Bethel, pin number twenty thirty-three twenty-three twenty-one zero zero one zero.
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. Motion made in second, discussion. S- Stephanie, uh, two things. At, at one time, I think there was discussion of, of, of applicant acquiring the property to the north to improve traffic flow and, and give him some more spaces. Is that, that's not part of this, correct?
It is not, no. And it's my understanding they have tried to, uh, purchase that property, but they haven't been able to.
Okay. And, and the second question, and this may be something, I think Kurt's on the line, um, may be able to answer. The, the new, well, the upgraded entrance way. I know there's a lot of, lot of vehicles, uh, trucks with, not exactly car haulers, but with large trailers that pull in there and, and just wanted, you know, making sure there's enough room, particularly since there's a, a, a concrete center median there. Is there enough room to make those turns?
Yeah, and that may be a question for, uh, Mr. Strandlin. I do know that the city engineer took a look at the site plan. Um, and to be honest, I don't recall any discussions on that particular item.
It's just a question for Mike.
Can you hear me? Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Oh, I can, yeah.
With that center median, we feel that it'll help, uh, direct the traffic for the, the traffic entering the facility and the traffic exiting the facility. The MINDOT's comments were that they did not care for a, an acceleration lane. So we, we have eliminated that. But they, they feel there is more issues with that acceleration lane with emerging into the existing traffic. So we do feel that that there is adequate, uh, area to allow them to enter and exit the site.
Okay. Looks, it's a nice building, though.
See, uh, Mr. Strandlin, can I just ask what the timetable is? What, what, what are they looking at for starting and when are they looking at opening that up?
We are proposing to get this going yet this fall. We have, uh, one more, uh, city meeting and then hope to get things started.
And I too say, well, it, it looks like a really nice building. I'm looking forward to seeing that when it's done.
Thank you. Us also.
Uh, that, that business over the years is, is, uh, not only, uh, improved in terms of appearance, but also just, you know, people know this is in East Bethel, so it's a, it's a good service provided. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, Mr. Sweeney, can you take roll call vote, please?
Mayor Voss. Councilmember Plazanz.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
And then that motion passes. Item six A four. Thanks, Kurt.
Thank you.
Kurt, the next agenda item is the site plan review for soda storage. It's an expansion of a self-storage facility located at two zero five six three Aberdeen Street. Soda Storage is requesting a site plan review for the expansion of, of the self-storage facility. There'd be four additional build late, buildings located at the site. So I have the site plan up right now. Uh, two of the buildings, um, are ten thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. There's one building at nine thousand six hundred square feet and one building at eight thousand one hundred and sixty square feet. Um, all buildings will be constructed just north of the existing buildings on the site. At the January sixth, twenty twenty City Council Work Session, Council did discuss a proposal for the expansion of the legal non-conforming use, at which time the consensus of the councils, uh, supported the expansion. The original site plan was approved in two thousand and three, uh, which was for seven buildings. Um, and this proposed site plan is for six buildings, thus eliminating a building. Um, so giving them more, uh, room on the property and more room for, um, fire access as well. Um, city staff did review the site plan and the engineer comments are attached. Uh, staff does support the configuration. Um, the fire department, um, is okay with the width of the diviles and stuff for fire rigs. Um, they are requiring an additional gated access at the northern boundary up here, um, on the site, um, along Davenport. This access point is only accessible for emergency service vehicles. Um, the developers or the property owners agree with it, um, so they will provide that additional access point and they'll just have to submit an updated site plan with me showing, um, that access point. The landscaping plan, let's see here, I think I have it on here. So here's the landscaping plan. It does meet requirements of the city code. Um, there's going to be a row of the Rushmore, um, arborvitae's along the western fence line here, um, that will face a, or create a buffer screen from Highway sixty-five. Um, this species does grow really quick and it's about twelve to twenty feet, so it will provide a very nice buffer. Um, a lot of other plantings on site, maple, hackberry, chokeberry, dogwoods. Um, I did attach that landscape plan for your review as well. Um, as for the architectural standards, um, the four new buildings will be similar in architectural design as the existing buildings. Um, the new buildings will have a, a very slight roof pit or pitched roof and the color of the buildings will be similar to the existing structures, but they will be a different material. Um, the, uh, property owner, um, is currently working on the actual elevations of the building, so they haven't been, um, fully submitted to staff yet. On July twenty-eighth, the Commission did review the site plan and they did discuss the benefits of the landscaping buffering, um, from Highway sixty-five and the benefits of the commercial expansion. And they did recommend approval of the site on a six-zero vote. So at this time, um, the Commission does recommend the Council to review and approve the site plan with the conditions set forth in the resolution. And I believe, um, Mr. Dave Knowles is on the line as well, um, the property owner, if you have specific questions for him.
All right, is there a motion on this item tonight?
I'll make a motion for the approval of Resolution number twenty twenty dash forty-two, approving the site plan review and expansion of a legal non-conforming use two zero five six three Aberdeen Street Northeast, East Bethel. Pin one seven dash three three dash two three dash four three dash zero 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 seven for soda storage.
Your second.
Second.
Motion's made in second, a discussion.
Yeah, so, um, this, uh, second, uh, entrance for emergency vehicles only, it's not currently part of the plan. Nor is it part of the resolution. I guess my concern is, you know, are we, I mean, we're just approving this on, um, that it will be done or where are we going to?
My recommendation would be for City Council to add a condition to the resolution stating that, um, the entrance, another entrance will be located on that northern portion off of Davenport. But, um, I did just receive the, um, s- speaking with the fire chief, um, last week or right before the staff report was completed, um, about the requirement of this other access point. Um, so, um, staff just recommends us just adding a condition to the resolution.
I'll make a motion to modify my motion of Resolution twenty twenty dash forty-two to include a requirement of a second entrance on Davenport.
Tom, do you second?
Yes.
Okay, the motion to amend is, uh, made in second, a discussion on a motion to amend. Seeing no discussion, uh, Sweeney, can you take a, a roll call vote on a motion to amend?
Mayor Voss.
Aye.
Councilmember Plazanz.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
And the motion to amend, uh, passes. Back to the original motion now as amended. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, Mr. Sweeney, can you take roll call vote on the motion as amended?
Mayor Voss. Councilmember Plazanz.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
And that motion passes. Uh, on to department reports. Thanks, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Jack, you have your.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. Item seventy-one, Executive Order twenty dash eighty-one. Governor Wallace issued Executive Order twenty dash fifty-six on May thirteenth, twenty twenty, address reopening of Minnesota's economy during COVID-nineteen, Eastside Province. Minnesota had been under a statewide stay-at-home order that ended after fifty-one days on May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, allowing certain businesses to reopen with social distancing practice in place, but continuing the limitation of sizes of groups of public gatherings. As a result, City Council approved a COVID-nineteen emergency preparedness plan to comply with Executive Order twenty dash fifty-six on June eighth, twenty twenty. Emergency Executive Order twenty dash eighty-one required Minnesotans to wear face covering in certain settings to prevent the spread of COVID-nineteen, went into effect on Friday, July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, at eleven fifty-nine P.M. For the requirements of the order, persons must wear face covering in indoor businesses and indoor public settings. Workers must also wear face coverings outdoors when it is not possible to maintain social distance. Section thirteen of the order requires that all businesses must update their COVID-nineteen preparedness plans, include the face covering requirements of Executive Order twenty dash eighty-one, inform their employees how their plan has been updated and make the revised plan available to their workers. Staff recommends City Council approve the updated emergency preparedness plan as exhibited in Attachment two in your packet, to comply with Executive Order twenty dash eighty-one.
Is there a motion on this tonight?
Vote for approv- vote for approval of the, um, updated emergency preparedness plan as exhibited in Attachment two to comply with Executive Order two zero dash eight one.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Motion made in second, discussion. Hearing none, uh, to the motion, Mr. Sweeney, can you take roll call vote?
Mayor Voss. Councilmember Plazanz.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington. Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
That motion votes.
Thank you. Item seventy-two, recording secretarial services. Gail Gessler has been the recording secretary for the Parks, Planning and Roads Commission and the EDA since December of twenty fifteen. Due to conflicts with her job schedule, she has submitted her resignation from this position as of July the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty. We have two primary options for the recording of minutes for commissions and authority meetings. Either post the position and hire a new recording secretary or engage in hiring time savers off-site secretarial services. Time savers off-site secretarial services serves as a recorder for City Council meetings since April, twenty fourteen. Their fees are based on a rate that's the highest of the base rate or a unit rate and average thirty-two dollars per page. Their work has been very good and they are available to add this work to their schedule. Twenty twenty Roads, Parks and Planning Commission meetings prepared by Ms. Gessler averaged twenty-eight dollars a day. Ms. Gessler charged a flat fee of one hundred and twenty dollars per meeting for her service. It's still somewhat difficult to compare these two on a page-to-page basis, but this was the only method really available. Uh, some of these different meetings have different content or different amounts of cut-and-paste material. Uh, so in the end, they are somewhat similar. Our saver, or time savers was a little higher, but their work has been very well and we've had no problems with them. While the page cost of the time savers off-site secretarial service to record the minutes of the E- EDA Roads, Parks and Planning Commission meeting would be slightly higher than their current service, this would be offset with a short turnaround time and the consistency of the format and style between all the minutes for the city meetings. Contracting the recording of commission meetings with time savers would also minimize or partially or potentially eliminate the turnover the city has experienced with this position over the past twelve years. City Council and staff expresses their thanks to Ms. Gessler for her service and wishes her the best in her future endeavor. Based on time savers' past performance, staff recommends City Council consider approval of their service for the recording of the minutes for the Roads, Parks, Planning and EDA meeting.
Is there a motion tonight?
Vote for approval of the time saving service for recording the minutes for the Road, Parks, Planning and EDA meeting.
Your second.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion.
I think, um, I think it should be advertised. I think, I, I'm for, you know, trying to split up, uh, spending and give, um, individual businesses, smaller businesses, um, bigger opportunities. And so I think it should be advertised. If you don't get anything, then I'd be for going with, with TOS, but, sorry. Yeah, that's, that's my opinion on it.
You're cat too, I saw. Any other discussion?
Look like you grew a mustache.
Yeah, so, um, my first question is, is basically, um, with TOS municipal ser- references or, um, Gail Gessler, those are both considered contractual services, are they not, Jack?
That's correct, Randy.
Okay, so, um, I mean, it, you know, this is on the table for now. I, I don't have any objection, uh, to do that. I, I, I'm in agreement with, with Suzanne that, you know, maybe it might not be a bad idea to, uh, put feelers out to see if, if, you know, there could be a replacement or maybe somebody who is local that may want to take on this particular role. But obviously, in the short term, you know, they're ready to go. I think, I think we need to obviously, uh, fulfill those services and a- at least until we can find somebody who may want to take on this particular role. Thanks.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Randy and Suzanne that, uh, I think for the short term, we're, we're gonna need to, uh, go with time savers, but, uh, perhaps you can, uh, you know, keep a lookout or, you know, for, for a, for a recording secretary. I recall, uh, it's a little while to even find Gail, uh, for position two, so. But, uh, knowing that we have time savers, uh, as an option, I think is, is helpful.
I also would like to make an opportunity for somebody, um, however, at the same time, we all understand we have to make the right choice for the present time at least.
So, um, is the mo- the motion right now is to go to time savers, correct? I, I'd like to amend the motion. Um, I, I'd like to amend the motion to, uh, include, uh, advertising, uh, for the position, such that we'll, we'll, we'll start with time savers and then, um, if we get septical applicants, we can make a decision whether to go to recording secretary.
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. Hey, hearing none. To the motion to amend of, or, uh, Mr. Sweeney, could you take roll call vote?
Mayor Boss.
Aye.
Councilmember Plazanz.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
And the motion to amend passes. Back to the original motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Sweeney, could you take roll call vote, please?
Mayor Boss.
Aye.
Councilmember Plazanz.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
That motion passes as amended. Item G three.
Item G three, facilities relocation for one hundred and eighty-sixth Avenue, Viking Boulevard, Service Road, Viking Meadows Golf Course. At the July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty city council meeting, the council considered approval to authorize the Viking Meadows Golf Course to proceed with the relocation of the green for hole number five to accommodate the alignment of one hundred and eighty-sixth Avenue to Viking Boulevard and Service Road. Golf course needs to start the relocation work in early. It is anticipated that grant mazes will not be available till possibly late September or early October. At the time of the July twenty-seventh council meeting, we had requested but not received an additional combination for MINDOT as to the approval of costs for reimbursement incurred prior to the official release of funds. As a result of this situation, city council tabled the motions for the green location to enable city staff additional time to obtain MINDOT approval for the incurred cost for reimbursement for this phase of the project. Staff was able to get Viking Meadows to extend their deadline with notification to proceed with the relocation to August sixth, twenty twenty. And we were given notice from MINDOT that we would receive the agreement to incur costs for relocation on August fifth, twenty twenty. On August third, twenty twenty, city council approved a relocation and right-of-way agreement exhibited as attachment one, authorizing Viking Meadows to proceed with the green locations for hole number five at a cost not to exceed forty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars contingent upon the receipt of the MINDOT agreement to incur cost prior to the release of project funds. We received the MINDOT agreement for the relocation of the golf green in advance of the service road construction on August the fourth, but the funds for this expense have yet to be released. We have informed that senior MINDOT officials have been thoroughly briefed on the importance of timely action of this project and the associated participation policy exemption request. However, their response relative to our schedules beyond the scope of influence of the local partnership program Metro State Aid and North Metro District Engineers Action on behalf of our interest. It appears that we've reached the level of the organizational structure in MINDOT beyond which we have no immediately accessible contacts regarding the approval of the release of funds for the green relocation. Viking Meadows Golf Course is agreeable and has extended the commitment of their relocation work to August the eleventh, twenty twenty, but any later date would jeopardize their plan for use of the green for the twenty twenty-one season. In order to keep the project's schedule on schedule and avoid any potential increases in cost or create delays which would have secondary consequences, our option has been reduced to the potential for using local funds to pay for the critical phase of this project. If council approves the use of local funds to proceed with the relocation project, staff will continue to seek retroactive approval for an exception to the MINDOT reimbursement policy to repay the city for this cost. Staff is requesting city council approval of the use of local funds for the green relocation for Viking Meadows Golf Course for hole number five at a cost not to exceed forty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars and authorize Viking Meadows to proceed with this project contingent upon the signed relocation right-of-way agreement was provided to them one week ago.
Move for approval of the use of local funds for the green relocation for Viking Meadows Golf Course, hole number five, at a cost not to exceed forty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars, and authorize the Viking Meadows Golf Course to proceed with this project contingent upon the signed relocation and the green.
Second.
The motion made in se- second. Discussion.
Okay, I have a comment. So, this, um, the sentence in here that say that, um, we have no immediate accessible contacts regarding the approval of re- release of funds from green relocation, that is saying to me that you cannot go up the chain in MINDOT to get a, a good answer? Is that correct?
That, that, that's partially correct, Suzanne. We've gone up the chain as far as we have contacts. Now we're dependent on our contacts internally with MINDOT to go up this way further with us. We have received contact from MINDOT over the past two days. We have two people that are working feverishly and diligently to get this done. Uh, that's Melissa Barnes, who presented earlier to us, and Sheila Capi. Uh, we have received some hope that this will be signed within the next few days, but there's no guarantee. Once it gets to a certain level in MINDOT, as was expressed earlier by Ms. Barnes, their policy is with a capital P. And sometimes they move at a much slower pace than they're accustomed to. We're certain this will get done, but I'm afraid if we don't give the golf course authorization proceed, it could have potential at first consequences and delaying the project to, uh, maybe even postponing it for a year.
So, I was under the impression that we approved this, uh, uh, the whole plan based on, I mean, that was the whole thing that we were gonna get reimbursement from MINDOT. And now, um, with the state's budget, I'm thinking we might get approval for it, but I think we might not get it for ten years. I mean, is that a possibility?
No, this really has nothing to do with the state's budget. These are federal funds, uh, that they're putting together. Uh, we actually started the request for this process with MINDOT on June the eleventh. And from some of their explanations due to COVID-nineteen, people working at home and, some issues with communications within their departments caused these conditions. It slowed this down. I've been in contact with MINDOT daily for the last three weeks, urging them to accelerate this as much as they can and expressing the need that this needs to be commenced as soon as possible. Uh, I still think we're gonna get it. Earlier on, too, we did mention that the city would probably have to spend some money upfront, most of which we thought could be reimbursable, but there is no guarantee. Uh, so we have had this discussion earlier on in the project, but I'm afraid if we don't get them started on this now, it has some consequences that does both financially in the project and also in, in the time to get it started.
So what's the big deal with the delay? I guess I'm not understanding that because, um, if, so it happens next summer, it's COVID. I mean, everything's being delayed as far as I can see.
Well, thi- this administratively, this is, this is a complicated, complex project to begin with. And you throw these other factors in and you throw the factor in that this has to go all the way up to, up the chain, not to the metro office, but to the state office to sign off on this cost participation exception. So it's, it's, it's nothing that's really new. We know that there are gonna be some pickups in this thing and, and dealings with, uh, MINDOT and the golf course and the contractors. It's not gonna be a project that falls just like Domino's. So it's one of the things that you run into in the nature of job that's, uh, uh, has a lot of moving parts to it like this one does.
If, if I could, uh, add something, Jack. My, my recollection of the discussion that brought this back to us, we, uh, we've all pretty much agreed that we're in imminent need for this to continue or almost blow this project that we're looking at connected to it. And, uh, I think the discussion included that if we have to take the gamble for the money, we will do that. And we tabled this for additional information from staff as far as what, uh, further conditions might be available. In, in my mind, I think they satisfied, staff satisfied our question.
That.
Yeah, that's, that, that, that's correct. And this is one reason, too, that we requested the advanced MSA funding to have it available in case we had to use it in terms of MINDOT actually being able to release these funds. This, this is quite a complicated process for them also. Uh, and it's something that they rarely do. We do have all the commitments from them that's gonna be done. We have a project agreement number. We have a state project number. Uh, we have the notifications and assurances from all the MINDOT officials we've worked with that this is gonna go through. But sometimes with them, it just takes longer than it does with something that we do at our level. And, and again, if we approve this, we will, we will continue to work, uh, and do everything we can to get reimbursement for this either shortly or on the back end of this project.
Hey, any further discussion? Okay, to the motion, Mr. Sweeney, could you take roll call vote?
Mayor Boss.
Aye.
Councilmember Plazanz.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Nay.
Uh, motion passes four to one. Hey, on to staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, we had two residents from Gopher Drive stop in city hall, uh, earlier this week, and they wanted me to relay their thanks to city council for approval of the engine braking ordinance. Uh, they, they reported to me that the noise on Gopher Drive has reduced significantly since, uh, those signs have been put up and that ordinance has been implemented. And they also reported to me that the speed study that was requested for that segment of road, uh, which included part of two-hundred-and-twenty-ninth Avenue all the way to two-thirty-seventh would hopefully be completed within the next thirty days. So we'll know something if there's gonna be anything involved in the reduction of speed along that route. Also, too, the city submitted the street and utility plans to MINDOT today for the approval, uh, for getting this project ready to bid, Service Road. Uh, the approval, we hope, can be done in four weeks. Again, we're working with them to expedite this project as much as we possibly can. And that's all I have at this time. I would like to add, too, and, and just mention Mayor Boss's comments at the first of the meeting, but at the conclusion of the motion and approval to go into closed session, I requested everybody close out of this meeting and log into the closed session invite that was sent to you to your email address at three o'clock this afternoon. Give us about two or three minutes and then we'll be ready to resume the closed session portion of the meeting.
Hey, thanks, Jack. Uh, council report, first, Kim.
Uh, just got a couple of things. Uh, this morning, went to the fire department. They had a SCBA refresher training. And just to remind everybody that we still have openings for the golf tournaments September eleventh, and we got whole sponsors available, too, for seventy-five dollars. That's all I got.
Suzanne.
Uh, the Parks Commission meeting for August was canceled, and I have a question for Jack. I am wondering if there is any update on, uh, getting those invasive species signs back and no parking on those streets down by the lake that I talked about before?
I'm still working on that. We're still trying to find the invasive species sign. Uh, we've contacted the DNR for some, so those will be up within the next couple of days, hopefully.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Randy.
I have nothing to report at this time. Thanks.
Tom?
It's dark plus about, yeah, for the last forty-five minutes or so, and the golfers have all gone home. Good night.
Okay. And, uh, I have nothing tonight. So with that, Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the benefit, uh, of the public and for the record, the city council is about to go into a closed session for the purpose of discussing the potential sale or purchase, uh, of real property pursuant to Minnesota statute. This closed session will be taped recorded as required by statute. Uh, the council will come back into open session at the conclusion of the closed session and announce if there were any actions taken during the course of the closed session. With that being said, Mr. Mayor, I recommend that a motion be made to go into a closed session.
There's such a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Sweeney, could you take roll call vote, please?
Mayor Boss.
Aye.
Councilmember Plazanz.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
That motion passes. Uh, we'll go into closed session and we will return.